Hey folks, could I reattach you please before we get started? I've been asked to read a little thing about our capacity here. There is no standing room capacity in this room, so please find a seat. If there are not enough seats, then there is an overflow space to the right. Where's the overflow space?
The committee room.
The committee room, right back here, where you can watch the meeting on livestream. So please find a seat. If you can't find a seat, then we'll have to ask you to go into the overflow space, per fire code. Thank you. All right, I will call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the City Council. Today is Thursday, October 9th. My name is Lance Davis. I use he/him pronouns. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this meeting of the City Council is being conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio/video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. With the clerk, please, call the roll.
This is roll call. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Burnley.
Here.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
With 10 counselors present, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that the City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there any counselors wishing to say a few words about members of the community tonight? Counselor Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with deep sorrow that I mention the recent passing of Douglas Bosley, who was one of our election commissioners. Doug Bosley resided at Gilman Therese for over 25 years and proudly served on the Somerville Election Commission for over 10 years. Doug was bigger than life, full of energy, enthusiastic, and a very hard worker. In addition to his regular job as a computer marketing manager, Doug was a lifetime swimmer who competed in some of the most challenging swims in the world, including nearly 30 swim across America events. We extend our sincerest sympathy to his wife, Laura.
Thank you. Counselor Klingon?
Mr. President, thank you. Through you, I ask that we recognize the friends and family and loved ones of Robert Hodnett Sr. He's the father of Robert Hodnett of the Somerville Fire Department. Robert Hodnett Sr., of Tewksbury, formerly of Somerville, passed away on September 30th. He was born in Cambridge, raised in Somerville. He was the son of the late Helene Kelly and James Hodnett. He was a proud Marine. He enlisted in the Marine Corps during Vietnam. He was assigned to Lima 3rd Company 3-1 and sustained injuries during Battle of the airstrip for which he was awarded two Purple Hearts. Following his honorable discharge, he continued his service and joined the Somerville Police Department. Robert enjoyed playing golf in his earlier years and was an avid sports fan. He always supported the Patriots and Celtics but didn't care for the Red Sox. As a history buff, he especially enjoyed war history. Once Marine, always Marine, he attended the annual Marine Corps reunion where he enjoyed connecting with his fellow Marines. The beloved husband of Barbara Hodnett, together they were married for over 40 years. He was the father of Ricky Silvestri, Vinnie Silvestri, Robert Hodnett and his wife Erica, and Justin Hodnett and his wife DeFay. Dear brother of James Hodnett and his wife Sandra of Kennebunk, Maine, cherished grampy of Kylie, Abigail, Matthew, Sophia, Whitley, and Kennedy. And I ask that you keep his friends and family in your prayers this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would everyone please rise as you're able for a moment of silence? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item, Mr. President, is Item 1.3, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 11th, 2025.
Seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
Place it on file? Should we lay it on the table to approve?
Yes. When we have one member out, if any members participate remotely, just so folks know, we do have to do a roll call for every vote. So we'll place this item on file and take it up together with any other items that are placed on, placed on the table for a vote at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
The next item is Item 3.1, a grant of location from Comcast to install a new manhole and a total of 46 feet of conduit in Auburn Avenue from Utility Pole 2 to a point of pickup at 11 Auburn Avenue.
And I'll call this public, declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
I have Dave Flouelling.
Dave Flouelling?
Good evening. Dave Flouelling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woven, Massachusetts. Would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition for Auburn Ave. to place 46 feet of conduit for the purpose of providing service to Number 11 Auburn Ave.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing to be closed. Any discussion? All right, that item will be laid on the table for approval.
Item 3.2 is a grant of location from Comcast to install a total of 49 feet of conduit in Houghton Street from Utility Pole 174 over 1 to a point of pickup at 121 Prospect Street.
I now declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
I have Dave Flouelling.
Dave Flouelling?
Dave Flouelling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woven, Massachusetts. Would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition for Houghton Street to place 49 feet of conduit for the purpose of providing service to 121 Prospect Street.
Is there anyone else to speak on the item? No one else? Okay. I declare the public hearing to be closed. Any discussion? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in more too, and honestly, I'm a little bit baffled by this. You know, I walked past Houghton Street yesterday, and the center of it was milled up because it was finally getting repaved after utility work on it last year. I think the hot top just went down today. So seeing this plan here with Houghton Street being dug up in the exact same place again the day after it's been paved seems a little off to me. There are other utility drop points nearby, possibly from Prospect Street. So I'd just like to get this sent in the committee. I don't have a set of conditions prepared tonight for it, but I do know there's a lot of concern from neighbors down there. And while they would like to get this done before winter weather so that that building can have service, there's just a lot of concerns about the placement and timing on this. So if we could send this one to committee, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, seeing no discussion, that'll be sent to, referred to license permits.
Oh.
Sorry.
And when it goes there, I'd ask my colleagues on license permits to ask the representative from Comcast very nicely to clean up all the deadlines on the polls down there. Thank you.
Duly noted.
Chair has a comment?
Counselor Burnley? No objections? Okay, very well. All right, very good. The next item then.
Item 3.3 is a grant of location from Comcast to install a total of 64 feet of conduit in Albion Street from Utility Pole 3 over 22 to a point of pickup at 156 Albion Street.
I declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Dave Flouelling?
Dave Flouelling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woven, Mass. Would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition for Albion Street to place 64 feet of conduit for the purpose of providing service to Number 156 Albion Street.
Okay, is there anyone else here to speak on the item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, that will be placed, laid on the table for, I got, we're gonna be saying that a lot tonight, laid on the table for approval.
Item 3.4 is a grant of location from Eversource to install a total of 15 feet of conduit in Cross Street East from Utility Pole 558 over 3 to a point of pickup at 33 Cross Street East.
I now declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
I have Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy. Jackie Duffy, we can't hear you here. Are you able to?
Nope, I just, I just got the thing on my screen to unmute.
There we go, perfect. I can hear you beautifully. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Jackie Duffy. Eversource would like to install 15 feet of conduit in Cross Street East to provide electric service to a three-family home at 29 Cross Street East.
Okay, any other, anyone else here to speak on the item? No hands? All right, seeing none, I declare the public hearing to be closed. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, that will be laid on the table for approval.
Item 3.5 is a grant of location from Eversource to install a total of 7 feet of conduit in Kingston Street from Utility Pole 101 over 4 to a point of pickup at 37 Kingston Street.
All right, I declare the public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Jackie Duffy?
Jackie Duffy. Eversource would like to install 7 feet of conduit in Kingston Street to provide electric service to 37 Kingston Street.
Very well, anyone else here to speak on the item? All right, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that will be laid on the table for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a couple items out of order tonight, folks. As many of you in the room here are already quite aware that we have some personnel matters to address, we will take up the report of the committee on confirmation of appointments and personnel matters. After that, we'll probably pause for some pictures if folks want to take some extra pictures. And then when we reconvene, we're gonna take Item 9.2 out of order at the request of the administration. So if there's no objection, Madam Clerk, would you please, well, Item 6A is the committee report.
Yes, indeed. Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on October 6th, 2025.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Confirmation and Appointments met on this Monday. We recommend approval of two appointments, one to the Zoning Board of Appeals and one to the Planning Board. And I just want to take a quick moment. When we, when I joined the council with a number of colleagues, we were often banging the drum in this committee that we want to see really qualified candidates for these roles. And I cannot overstate how much that has been happening over the last few years. We recommended approval of Olivia Mobaid to the Zoning Board of Appeals, just an incredibly impressive person and resume, most recently a project manager on the bus network redesign for the MBTA, which I know many of us are familiar with. We also recommended confirmation of Coralie Cooper to the Planning Board. Ms. Cooper, I want to make sure I get it right. She has most recently been the Deputy Director of the Northeast States for Coordinated Air Use Management, has a lot of experience at the Volpe Center, and just brings a wealth of experience. And we're really lucky to have folks like this in our community stepping up for, in many ways, kind of thankless jobs, you know, get yelled at a lot and make tough decisions. So we're happy to recommend those to, for approval. And then the reason we have a big crowd here tonight, and it's wonderful to see especially so many young people, thank you all for being here, we have eight promotions within the police department. Just gonna briefly read them out. Michael Perone, we recommended approval, promotion to the position of Police Captain. Rico Isidoro to the position of Police Lieutenant. Mark Defava to the position of Police Lieutenant. Joseph Tevis to the position of Police Sergeant. Justin Costa to the position of Police Sergeant. Patrick Canty to the position, position of Police Sergeant. Cassandra Camper to the position of Police Sergeant. And Richard Levy Jr. to the position of Police Deputy Chief. The committee was, of course, extremely impressed with, with all of these candidates. Before the meeting, I was able to review with the chief all of their records and was incredibly impressed myself. I'm happy that we recommended approval of all of these unanimously. And with that, I ask that the committee report be accepted, and then we can start the ceremony.
All right, very well. We'll do a roll call vote for the committee report, and then we can go to the fun part.
On the report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on October 6th, 2025, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, that committee report is approved, and that will put many appointments before this council to take the oath of office.
Call folks up individually or however.
I said they could all come up if they want, and then we'll do it individually, but whatever they prefer.
Everyone who's getting something new on their jersey, come on up. And anyone who's gonna help, come on up too. If anyone wants to take pictures, family members, friends, whatever, please feel free to push right in here. This space is your space, so don't be shy. Come on up, take pictures, get whatever good out of you want. Tell us to move if we're in the picture.
... the US Department of Public Safety, the Department of the Department of Public Safety. They've got a little one that's two bits, but it's a page and a half. It's very... Well. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[91.32][91.32][S01. Thank you.[91.34][91.34][S01. Thank you.[91.36][91.36][S01. Thank you.[91.38][91.38][S01. Thank you.[91.40][91.40][S01. Thank you.[91.42][91.42][S01. Thank you.[91.44][91.44][S01. Thank you.[91.46][91.46][S01. Thank you.[91.48][91.48][S01. Thank you.[91.50][91.50][S01. Thank you.[91.52][91.52][S01. Thank you.[91.54][91.54][S01. Thank you.[91.56][91.56][S01. Thank you.[91.58][91.58][S01. Thank you.[91.60][91.60][S01. Thank you.[91.62][91.62][S01. Thank you.[91.64][91.64][S01. Thank you.[91.66][91.66][S01. Thank you.[91.68][91.68][S01. Thank you.[91.70][91.70][S01. Thank you.[91.72][91.72][S01. Thank you.[91.74][91.74][S01. Thank you.[91.76][91.76][S01. Thank you.[91.78][91.78][S01. Thank you.[91.80][91.80][S01. Thank you.[91.82][91.82][S01. Thank you.[91.84][91.84][S01. Thank you.[91.86][91.86][S01. Thank you.[91.88][91.88][S01. Thank you.[91.90][91.90][S01. Thank you.[91.92][91.92][S01. Thank you.[91.94][91.94][S01. Thank you.[91.96][91.96][S01. Thank you.[91.98][91.98][S01. Thank you.[92.00][92.00][S01. Thank you.[92.02][92.02][S01. Thank you.[92.04][92.04][S01. Thank you.[92.06][92.06][S01. Thank you.[92.08][92.08][S01. Thank you.[92.10][92.10][S01. Thank you.[92.12][92.12][S01. Thank you.[92.14][92.14][S01. Thank you.[92.16][92.16][S01. Thank you.[92.18][92.18][S01. Thank you.[92.20][92.20][S01. Thank you.[92.22][92.22][S01. Thank you.[92.24][92.24][S01. Thank you.[92.26][92.26][S01. Thank you.[92.28][92.28][S01. Thank you.[92.30][92.30][S01. Thank you.[92.32][92.32][S01. Thank you.[92.34][92.34][S01. Thank you.[92.36][92.36][S01. Thank you.[92.38][92.38][S01. Thank you.[92.40][92.40][S01. Thank you.[92.42][92.42][S01. Thank you.[92.44][92.44][S01. Thank you.[92.46][92.46][S01. Thank you.[92.48][92.48][S01. Thank you.[92.50][92.50][S01. Thank you.[92.52][92.52][S01. Thank you.[92.54][92.54][S01. Thank you.[92.56][92.56][S01. Thank you.[92.58][92.58][S01. Thank you.[92.60][92.60][S01. Thank you.[92.62][92.62][S01. Thank you.[92.64][92.64][S01. Thank you.[92.66][92.66][S01. Thank you.[92.68][92.68][S01. Thank you.[92.70][92.70][S01. Thank you.[92.72][92.72][S01. Thank you.[92.74][92.74][S01. Thank you.[92.76][92.76][S01. Thank you.[92.78][92.78][S01. Thank you.[92.80][92.80][S01. Thank you.[92.82][92.82][S01. Thank you.[92.84][92.84][S01. Thank you.[92.86][92.86][S01. Thank you.[92.88][92.88][S01. Thank you.[92.90][92.90][S01. Thank you.[92.92][92.92][S01. Thank you.[92.94][92.94][S01. Thank you.[92.96][92.96][S01. Thank you.[92.98][92.98][S01. Thank you.[93.00][93.00][S01. Thank you.[93.02][93.02][S01. Thank you.[93.04][93.04][S01. Thank you.[93.06][93.06][S01. Thank you.[93.08][93.08][S01. Thank you.[93.10][93.10][S01. Thank you.[93.12][93.12][S01. Thank you.[93.14][93.14][S01. Thank you.[93.16][93.16][S01. Thank you.[93.18][93.18][S01. Thank you.[93.20][93.20][S01. Thank you.[93.22][93.22][S01. Thank you.[93.24][93.24][S01. Thank you.[93.26][93.26][S01. Thank you.[93.28][93.28][S01. Thank you.[93.30][93.30][S01. Thank you.[93.32][93.32][S01. Thank you.[93.34][93.34][S01. Thank you.[93.36][93.36][S01. Thank you.[93.38][93.38][S01. Thank you.[93.40][93.40][S01. Thank you.[93.42][93.42][S01. Thank you.[93.44][93.44][S01. Thank you.[93.46][93.46][S01. Thank you.[93.48][93.48][S01. Thank you.[93.50][93.50][S01. Thank you.[93.52][93.52][S01. Thank you.[93.54][93.54][S01. Thank you.[93.56][93.56][S01. Thank you.[93.58][93.58][S01. Thank you.[93.60][93.60][S01. Thank you.[93.62][93.62][S01. Thank you.[93.64][93.64][S01. Thank you.[93.66][93.66][S01. Thank you.[93.68][93.68][S01. Thank you.[93.70][93.70][S01. Thank you.[93.72][93.72][S01. Thank you.[93.74][93.74][S01. Thank you.[93.76][93.76][S01. Thank you.[93.78][93.78][S01. Thank you.[93.80][93.80][S01. Thank you.[93.82][93.82][S01. Thank you.[93.84][93.84][S01. Thank you.[93.86][93.86][S01. Thank you.[93.88][93.88][S01. Thank you.[93.90][93.90][S01. Thank you.[93.92][93.92][S01. Thank you.[93.94][93.94][S01. Thank you.[93.96][93.96][S01. Thank you.[93.98][93.98][S01. Thank you.[94.00][94.00][S01. Thank you.[94.02][94.02][S01. Thank you.[94.04][94.04][S01. Thank you.[94.06][94.06][S01. Thank you.[94.08][94.08][S01. Thank you.[94.10][94.10][S01. Thank you.[94.12][94.12][S01. Thank you.[94.14][94.14][S01. Thank you.[94.16][94.16][S01. Thank you.[94.18][94.18][S01. Thank you.[94.20][94.20][S01. Thank you.[94.22][94.22][S01. Thank you.[94.24][94.24][S01. Thank you.[94.26][94.26][S01. Thank you.[94.28][94.28][S01. Thank you.[94.30][94.30][S01. Thank you.[94.32][94.32][S01. Thank you.[94.34][94.34][S01. Thank you.[94.36][94.36][S01. Thank you.[94.38][94.38][S01. Thank you.[94.40][94.40][S01. Thank you.[94.42][94.42][S01. Thank you.[94.44][94.44][S01. Thank you.[94.46][94.46][S01. Thank you.[94.48][94.48][S01. Thank you.[94.50][94.50][S01. Thank you.[94.52][94.52][S01. Thank you.[94.54][94.54][S01. Thank you.[94.56][94.56][S01. Thank you.[94.58][94.58][S01. Thank you.[94.60][94.60][S01. Thank you.[94.62][94.62][S01. Thank you.[94.64][94.64][S01. Thank you.[94.66][94.66][S01. Thank you.[94.68][94.68][S01. Thank you.[94.70][94.70][S01. Thank you.[94.72][94.72][S01. Thank you.[94.74][94.74][S01. Thank you.[94.76][94.76][S01. Thank you.[94.78][94.78][S01. Thank you.[94.80][94.80][S01. Thank you.[94.82][94.82][S01. Thank you.[94.84][94.84][S01. Thank you.[94.86][94.86][S01. Thank you.[94.88][94.88][S01. Thank you.[94.90][94.90][S01. Thank you.[94.92][94.92][S01. Thank you.[94.94][94.94][S01. Thank you.[94.96][94.96][S01. Thank you.[94.98][94.98][S01. Thank you.[95.00][95.00][S01. Thank you.[95.02][95.02][S01. Thank you.[95.04][95.04][S01. Thank you.[95.06][95.06][S01. Thank you.[95.08][95.08][S01. Thank you.[95.10][95.10][S01. Thank you.[95.12][95.12][S01. Thank you.[95.14][95.14][S01. Thank you.[95.16][95.16][S01. Thank you.[95.18][95.18][S01. Thank you.[95.20][95.20][S01. Thank you.[95.22][95.22][S01. Thank you.[95.24][95.24][S01. Thank you.[95.26][95.26][S01. Thank you.[95.28][95.28][S01. Thank you.[95.30][95.30][S01. Thank you.[95.32][95.32][S01. Thank you.[95.34][95.34][S01. Thank you.[95.36][95.36][S01. Thank you.[95.38][95.38][S01. Thank you.[95.40][95.40][S01. Thank you.[95.42][95.42][S01. Thank you.[95.44][95.44][S01. Thank you.[95.46][95.46][S01. Thank you.[95.48][95.48][S01. Thank you.[95.50][95.50][S01. Thank you.[95.52][95.52][S01. Thank you.[95.54][95.54][S01. Thank you.[95.56][95.56][S01. Thank you.[95.58][95.58][S01. Thank you.[95.60][95.60][S01. Thank you.[95.62][95.62][S01. Thank you.[95.64][95.64][S01. Thank you.[95.66][95.66][S01. Thank you.[95.68][95.68][S01. Thank you.[95.70][95.70][S01. Thank you.[95.72][95.72][S01. Thank you.[95.74][95.74][S01. Thank you.[95.76][95.76][S01. Thank you.[95.78][95.78][S01. Thank you.[95.80][95.80][S01. Thank you.[95.82][95.82][S01. Thank you.[95.84][95.84][S01. Thank you.[95.86][95.86][S01. Thank you.[95.88][95.88][S01. Thank you.[95.90][95.90][S01. Thank you.[95.92][95.92][S01. Thank you.[95.94][95.94][S01. Thank you.[95.96][95.96][S01. Thank you.[95.98][95.98][S01. Thank you.[96.00][96.00][S01. Thank you.[96.02][96.02][S01. Thank you.[96.04][96.04][S01. Thank you.[96.06][96.06][S01. Thank you.[96.08][96.08][S01. Thank you.[96.10][96.10][S01. Thank you.[96.12][96.12][S01. Thank you.[96.14][96.14][S01. Thank you.[96.16][96.16][S01. Thank you.[96.18][96.18][S01. Thank you.[96.20][96.20][S01. Thank you.[96.22][96.22][S01. Thank you.[96.24][96.24][S01. Thank you.[96.26][96.26][S01. Thank you.[96.28][96.28][S01. Thank you.[96.30][96.30][S01. Thank you.[96.32][96.32][S01. Thank you.[96.34][96.34][S01. Thank you.[96.36][96.36][S01. Thank you.[96.38][96.38][S01. Thank you.[96.40][96.40][S01. Thank you.[96.42][96.42][S01. Thank you.[96.44][96.44][S01. Thank you.[96.46][96.46][S01. Thank you.[96.48][96.48][S01. Thank you.[96.50][96.50][S01. Thank you.[96.52][96.52][S01. Thank you.[96.54][96.54][S01. Thank you.[96.56][96.56][S01. Thank you.[96.58][96.58][S01. Thank you.[96.60][96.60][S01. Thank you.[96.62][96.62][S01. Thank you.[96.64][96.64][S01. Thank you.[96.66][96.66][S01. Thank you.[96.68][96.68][S01. Thank you.[96.70][96.70][S01. Thank you.[96.72][96.72][S01. Thank you.[96.74][96.74][S01. Thank you.[96.76][96.76][S01. Thank you.[96.78][96.78][S01. Thank you.[96.80][96.80][S01. Thank you.[96.82][96.82][S01. Thank you.[96.84][96.84][S01. Thank you.[96.86][96.86][S01. Thank you.[96.88][96.88][S01. Thank you.[96.90][96.90][S01. Thank you.[96.92][96.92][S01. Thank you.[96.94][96.94][S01. Thank you.[96.96][96.96][S01. Thank you.[96.98][96.98][S01. Thank you.[97.00][97.00][S01. Thank you.[97.02][97.02][S01. Thank you.[97.04][97.04][S01. Thank you.[97.06][97.06][S01. Thank you.[97.08][97.08][S01. Thank you.[97.10][97.10][S01. Thank you.[97.12][97.12][S01. Thank you.[97.14][97.14][S01. Thank you.[97.16][97.16][S01. Thank you.[97.18][97.18][S01. Thank you.[97.20][97.20][S01. Thank you.[97.22][97.22][S01. Thank you.[97.24][97.24][S01. Thank you.[97.26][97.26][S01. Thank you.[97.28][97.28][S01. Thank you.[97.30][97.30][S01. Thank you.[97.32][97.32][S01. Thank you.[97.34][97.34][S01. Thank you.[97.36][97.36][S01. Thank you.[97.38][97.38][S01. Thank you.[97.40][97.40][S01. Thank you.[97.42][97.42][S01. Thank you.[97.44][97.44][S01. Thank you.[97.46][97.46][S01. Thank you.[97.48][97.48][S01. Thank you.[97.50][97.50][S01. Thank you.[97.52][97.52][S01. Thank you.[97.54][97.54][S01. Thank you.[97.56][97.56][S01. Thank you.[97.58][97.58][S01. Thank you.[97.60][97.60][S01. Thank you.[97.62][97.62][S01. Thank you.[97.64][97.64][S01. Thank you.[97.66][97.66][S01. Thank you.[97.68][97.68][S01. Thank you.[97.70][97.70][S01. Thank you.[97.72][97.72][S01. Thank you.[97.74][97.74][S01. Thank you.[97.76][97.76][S01. Thank you.[97.78][97.78][S01. Thank you.[97.80][97.80][S01. Thank you.[97.82][97.82][S01. Thank you.[97.84][97.84][S01. Thank you.[97.86][97.86][S01. Thank you.[97.88][97.88][S01. Thank you.[97.90][97.90][S01. Thank you.[97.92][97.92][S01. Thank you.[97.94][97.94][S01. Thank you.[97.96][97.96][S01. Thank you.[97.98][97.98][S01. Thank you.[98.00][98.00][S01. Thank you.[98.02][98.02][S01. Thank you.[98.04][98.04][S01. Thank you.[98.06][98.06][S01. Thank you.[98.08][98.08][S01. Thank you.[98.10][98.10][S01. Thank you.[98.12][98.12][S01. Thank you.[98.14][98.14][S01. Thank you.[98.16][98.16][S01. Thank you.[98.18][98.18][S01. Thank you.[98.20][98.20][S01. Thank you.[98.22][98.22][S01. Thank you.[98.24][98.24][S01. Thank you.[98.26][98.26][S01. Thank you.[98.28][98.28][S01. Thank you.[98.30][98.30][S01. Thank you.[98.32][98.32][S01. Thank you.[98.34][98.34][S01. Thank you.[98.36][98.36][S01. Thank you.[98.38][98.38][S01. Thank you.[98.40][98.40][S01. Thank you.[98.42][98.42][S01. Thank you.[98.44][98.44][S01. Thank you.[98.46][98.46][S01. Thank you.[98.48][98.48][S01. Thank you.[98.50][98.50][S01. Thank you.[98.52][98.52][S01. Thank you.[98.54][98.54][S01. Thank you.[98.56][98.56][S01. Thank you.[98.58][98.58][S01. Thank you.[98.60][98.60][S01. Thank you.[98.62][98.62][S01. Thank you.[98.64][98.64][S01. Thank you.[98.66][98.66][S01. Thank you.[98.68][98.68][S01. Thank you.[98.70][98.70][S01. Thank you.[98.72][98.72][S01. Thank you.[98.74][98.74][S01. Thank you.[98.76][98.76][S01. Thank you.[98.78][98.78][S01. Thank you.[98.80][98.80][S01. Thank you.[98.82][98.82][S01. Thank you.[98.84][98.84][S01. Thank you.[98.86][98.86][S01. Thank you.[98.88][98.88][S01. Thank you.[98.90][98.90][S01. Thank you.[98.92][98.92][S01. Thank you.[98.94][98.94][S01. Thank you.[98.96][98.96][S01. Thank you.[98.98][98.98][S01. Thank you.[98.99][98.99][S01. Thank you.[99.01][99.01][S01. Thank you.[99.03][99.03][S01. Thank you.[99.05][99.05][S01. Thank you.[99.07][99.07][S01. Thank you.[99.09][99.09][S01. Thank you.[99.11][99.11][S01. Thank you.[99.13][99.13][S01. Thank you.[99.15][99.15][S01. Thank you.[99.17][99.17][S01. Thank you.[99.19][99.19][S01. Thank you.[99.21][99.21][S01. Thank you.[99.23][99.23][S01. Thank you.[99.25][99.25][S01. Thank you.[99.27][99.27][S01. Thank you.[99.29][99.29][S01. Thank you.[99.31][99.31][S01. Thank you.[99.33][99.33][S01. Thank you.[99.35][99.35][S01. Thank you.[99.37][99.37][S01. Thank you.[99.39][99.39][S01. Thank you.[99.41][99.41][S01. Thank you.[99.43][99.43][S01. Thank you.[99.45][99.45][S01. Thank you.[99.47][99.47][S01. Thank you.[99.49][99.49][S01. Thank you.[99.51][99.51][S01. Thank you.[99.53][99.53][S01. Thank you.[99.55][99.55][S01. Thank you.[99.57][99.57][S01. Thank you.[99.59][99.59][S01. Thank you.[99.61][99.61][S01. Thank you.[99.63][99.63][S01. Thank you.[99.65][99.65][S01. Thank you.[99.67][99.67][S01. Thank you.[99.69][99.69][S01. Thank you.[99.71][99.71][S01. Thank you.[99.73][99.73][S01. Thank you.[99.75][99.75][S01. Thank you.[99.77][99.77][S01. Thank you.[99.79][99.79][S01. Thank you.[99.81][99.81][S01. Thank you.[99.83][99.83][S01. Thank you.[99.85][99.85][S01. Thank you.[99.87][99.87][S01. Thank you.[99.89][99.89][S01. Thank you.[99.91][99.91][S01. Thank you.[99.93][99.93][S01. Thank you.[99.95][99.95][S01. Thank you.[99.97][99.97][S01. Thank you.[99.99][99.99][S01. 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 Thank you.
All right, with the councilors, please take their seats. All right, I will call this meeting back to order.
I have a quorum in the room. Is that enough, or we have to do a roll call?
Okay, we will do a roll call to establish a quorum.
This is roll call. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Burnley.
Here.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
With ten councilors present, we have a quorum.
All right, we will take, without any objection, we'll take item 9.2 out of order, Madam Clerk.
Item 9.2 is a public event from the mayor's office for truck or treat on October 23rd from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
All right, I recognize Director Singh.
Through the chair, thank you so much. The City Hall Ghost has asked me to share a few words on their behalf. If I could have the City Hall Ghost come up to the podium, please bear with me.
Happy to recognize the City Hall Ghost if they're in the chambers.
The City Hall Ghost has been patiently waiting there since 6:45.
I mean, I assume the City Hall Ghost is here at all hours.
Thank you, Ghost. Good evening, good councilors. It is I, the Director of the Department of Paranormal Whimsy, or DP Double Boo to you. When the planets and stars align, and a little black cat with a popular agenda of crime ascends the political ladder of the community path, a ghost crosses the wheel. Yes, this is the spectral math. This year, we solemnly welcome you to another seasonal spooky series of trucks, treats, monsters, and undying mysteries. On October 18th, 2 to 6, on Somerville Avenue, Monster Mash presents a ghoulish promenade. Games, music, both shrill and true, carving pumpkins, no need to be afraid. Then, truck or treat, right here on October 23rd, B-Y-O costumes, and we'll bring the treats. With enchanting screams to be heard when the Loch Ness Loader hits the street. Come one, come all, to our eerie show, and to the next mayor who shall serve in Minerva's shadow. Ghoul luck. We look forward to working with Boo. Just don't forget your undead constituents, because they won't forget you. May your spooky season be safe, delightful, and ever so frightful. Yours, Ghouli, the City Hall Ghost.
Thank you, Director, and thank you to our resident apparition. Any discussion? Counselor Scott?
In addition to those festivities, I want to remind everybody that the best trick-or-treating in Somerville clearly happens on Springfield. I have done an award too, so I hope to see if they're out there. And I will brook no disagreement on this topic. Counselor Wilson? No.
Counselor Wilson?
Crime.
I think the nervous team would like to have a word with you about plagiarism, new scandal. All right, seen no discussion? No, seen no discussion, that will be laid on the table for approval? All right, very well. While the City Hall Ghost continues to do their distribution of seasonal treats, we will move on to the next item.
That will bring us back to the regular order of business, which is item 4.1, an order by Counselor Davis, that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management provide an update on the condition of the high school building exterior tiles, and efforts to prevent and mitigate future tile failures.
That we can refer that to school buildings, facilities, and maintenance.
Item 4.2 is a resolution by Councilors Davis and Strezzo, that the administration discuss with this council the process for removing abandoned items from public spaces.
Counselor Strezzo?
Thank you. So this item was put forward too well. I'd like the administration to let us know in committee what the process is for when a, this is put forward because residents were telling me that they will, they would report discarded items, say in Seven Hills Park, that are left for days. And is there a process to removing this item? Or how does that work? Because I hear there's a process and several steps. So what is the process for moving a pile of dirty socks? Can we get some confirmation, discussion on this? And I'm asking that this be sent, and when it is sent to committee, that happy to be present in the committee? So the Chair will... Yeah, I think I'm done there, yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk, for the sake of Counselor, Vice President Ba and I not having to play musical chairs too much, could we read the next two items and take them up together? And then I'll ask the Vice President to take the...
Item 4.3 is a resolution by Councilors Davis and Strezzo, that the administration discuss with this council whether there is a need to create additional alternative locations for people to store their belongings. Item 4.4 is a resolution by Councilors Davis and Strezzo, that the administration provide data on needles found in and around Davis Square outside of the designated receptacle box, including a breakdown by specific location and used versus unused.
Counselor Strezzo?
Thank you, I'm happy to, yeah, okay, all right. So we'll start with 4.3. So with that, now as 4.2 is discussing what happens when discarded socks are left for days in the area. If these items are significant to anyone who may have left them, can we work with community partners, say Somerville Homeless Coalition, to create an additional off-site location? So whatever snag there is that is preventing these items from being relocated at a more expeditious, in a more expeditious way, cool. Can we have some storage cube box or something nearby to where they could be placed? Because I am hearing continuously from residents in the area that this is an issue, and it is piled up. So there's that. Resolution 4.4, Counselor Davis and I learned in the Davis Square Neighborhood Business Meeting that the needles that are reported from Health and Human Services Department, the needles that are found are counted, if a box of unused needles are found, they're counted in the collection of needles. But, so there's not really a deciphering of unused or used needles. So I think it's a fair request to get a breakdown, because I think that skews the data. Happy to have Counselor Davis speak on this if he wishes as well. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you, thank you to my good colleague at large for working on these items with me. I'll just speak briefly. I, you know, I sign on to everything that Counselor Strezzo said about the intent here. In terms of the belongings, obviously, you know, the first two items kind of work together. There's, we heard on Monday, and we've heard a number of times throughout various discussions about, you know, addressing some of the challenges that we and all of our neighbors are facing, including those who don't have a place to go with the roof over their head at night. And among those discussions has been, you know, what do we do with stuff? And there's a, there's a very, in my, my observation, it's a very, like, broad spectrum there. There's, and this goes for, from on one end, you know, somebody setting up, you know, shelter of some sort, tents, et cetera, to perhaps on the other end, and, you know, forgive me for using, for maybe the sort of loose establishment, what one and the other end might be. But, you know, for the sake of making the point, I've received pictures, and I'm sure others have seen, of what appears to be discarded items around the porta potty that is in Seven Hills Park that's there, so folks have a place to, you know, to do what they have to do. And so it strikes me that there's probably some room, you know, somewhere along that spectrum to treat things differently. And that's, that's my intent in having this conversation, is just to understand the approach as it stands currently, and the degree to which there's, you know, any range of how this, of approaches of how the city will respond to various items, and to, you know, to discuss whether there, whether there's some room for adjustment. I think, you know, it may well be that there's, there's an opportunity to remove things that seem clearly to be abandoned, and I use the word abandoned in this, in item 4 dot 2 very deliberately. It's a legal concept. I don't necessarily mean it in its legal context here, but, but very closely, you know, something that does appear to have been abandoned versus something that is, you know, that very well perhaps may not be. We know for certain that when folks who are experiencing homelessness are separated from their belongings, it often can set them back weeks or months on the, on, you know, any path that they may be attempting to undertake to get themselves into a better position, where they have supports, where they have housing, where they have treatment, medication, identification, other paperwork, just information about things that they may, services that they may have been interested in, and grab the pamphlet, for example. We try and make those, we try and create situations where people have touch points. So I fully understand how damaging it can be when folks are separated from their belongings, and that absolutely has to remain central to this conversation. But as I said, it strikes me that there, there may be, you know, at any of the spectrum where we're very confident that's not going to be a concern, and we might be able to adjust our approach here. So that's all I'm looking for in that regard. And as Counselor Strezzo explained, the request for data regarding needles very well. The only thing I'll add is, and this is on me, I neglected to put a time, to request a timeframe here. And I think, you know, through you, Mr. President, to the administration, certainly my intent, and I won't speak for Counselor Strezzo or anyone else, is, you know, let's start with whatever we have easily accessible, right? So to the degree that there, that we have data that is, that can be, you know, easily broken out into these different categories, for, you know, whichever, if we have it for the past calendar, calendar year, or the last 12 months, great. If we have it for this calendar year, great. If we have it only for the last three months, finally, let's start with what we have that's easy. And, and I'm hopeful to the, through you, Mr. President, to the Chair of Public Health and Public Safety, that these could go on the agenda at the next meeting for that committee. You know, and if we feel like we want more information, and there's some digging to be done, then we can certainly have the conversation there. But I want this request to be taken in the spirit of, you know, I don't want to create a huge, you know, a huge work project here. Just let's, let's start with what we have, and what you can present, and we'll kind of go from there. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to speak? Counselor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to sign on to 4.2. Also, just point out, it's a citywide issue, right? You know, if anyone's thinking this is just narrowly something impacting one part of the city. Earlier today, I was out being shown around another neighborhood, and it was McGrath Highway over by Alston Street. And there was a mattress there, and they were wondering, you know, how do we get this out of here? And this is something that we need to have a real plan for citywide as well. So I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. And like I said, I want to sign on to 4.2 as well.
Any other discussion? Okay, those items will be referred, approved and referred to, do we have to, let's have approval, and a copy be sent to Public Health and Public Safety? Thank you.
Item 4.5 is an order by Counselor Said, that the Director of Mobility discuss with this council strategies for improving the safety of users of the community path as detailed within.
Counselor Said?
Through you, Mr. President. So this is another item that I'm filing regarding safety improvements on the community path. As we know, the city has started gathering input and feedback from the community. And, yeah, I think it would be great to start having a conversation around what we can and cannot do in terms of regulating speed limit, enforcement of motorized vehicle ban. And another thing that I would like us to discuss is, as we're thinking creatively about how to make the community path safer for users, to start discussing how we can work with community partners. So this is the intent of the item, and, yeah, that'll be all.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Counselor Strezzo?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you too, Counselor Said. Can you define what you mean by safety? Are you talking mobility safety, or you're talking, because safety can be defined a couple of ways?
So we have been working on this with Mobility Department for over a year now. And so this is improvement, signage improvement. And we have a motorized vehicle ban that's not being enforced, because the signage says motor vehicles. And I think try also, I've been hearing a lot from constituents about the importance of regulating the speed. And there's not, there's not a lot we can do as a city to do that, because a lot of it is set by the state. So I think having that conversation is important, so that users understand what we can do and what we cannot do. And because we cannot do that, so how can we think creatively, so that we can still come up with ways to make the community path safer? So that's, yeah.
Counselor Strezzo, follow up?
Mr. President, through you too, Counselor Said, thank you for that. Yes, I wanted to know, because it is fresh on my mind that we were talking about the Davis Square section of community path in the meeting that happened last, the safety meeting that happened in the region. And it was brought up by several residents that the community path at night, a couple of female people in the area said they felt very unsafe at nighttime. So that's why I wasn't sure if, are we talking like mobility safety, are we talking physical safety, are we talking about emotional safety? What kind of safety are we talking about? Thank you for elaborating. I do want to sign on to this, as it isn't a mobility safety issue, because yes, it really is astounding to me how I see so many people using the community path, and it is for everyone. And it, and I think one quick inch move to the left or right can really harm someone if someone's speeding down in a very fast way, and not think that this is a path for all of us. And it's just basic safety and consideration for all of us using the path. And I'm hoping we can at least push that, that standard, that moral standard for all of us. But let's see. Bye. Thanks for putting this forward. What's up, Counselor Klingon? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strezzo. Any further discussions? Seen none? Laid on the table for approval, and a copy to...
Mr. President, I would like to send this to Traffic and Parking.
Traffic and Parking? All right, very well, thank you. Next item?
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselor Said, that the Director of Mobility install a speed bump onto Ashland Street.
Counselor Said?
Mr. President, I would like to send this to Traffic and Parking. This was brought to my attention by a neighbor on Ashland Street who, so this street is very close to the Kennedy School. And this neighbor lost his dog, who was hit by a car that was going 40 miles an hour. So I think this is just a reminder of the importance of having speed humps, especially on streets that are close to schools. Yeah, so again, I would like to send this to Traffic and Parking.
All right, that item is laid on the table for approval with a copy to Traffic and Parking.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselor Said, that the Director of Inspection Services update this council on compliance with the short-term rental ordinance, including any updated enforcement methods, and whether the imposition of the 3% community impact fee under Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3D, has had any impact on the number of short-term rental units in the city, or whether any impacts are expected.
Counselor Said?
Mr. President, I would like to send this to Housing and Community Development. Yeah, so getting an update, and I just want to say that I will be sending an email to ISD stating exactly what I'm looking for in that report.
Counselors Wilson and Scott would like to sign on. And Counselor Burnley would like to speak, and then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to sign on, and I'd also note...
Give us a sec to get your audio up. We want to make sure we're here. Try again.
Is that good?
Yep, there you go. Thank you. Go right ahead.
No problem. Through you, I'd like to sign on as well. And as someone who served on the committee that was discussing this community impact fee, I'm glad to see that the council and the mayor moved forward with it. But I would just add to the discussion that there's reporting from the Boston Globe that there are underground networks of Airbnbs. We've, as the council, have also gotten reports from constituents that there seems to be activity of the sort in Somerville. I'd love for members of the committee to bring that element to this discussion as well, because what that would mean in effect, if it is true, is that the ordinance as written is being flouted by some homeowners, and also that there's money on the table when we're talking about this 3% community impact fee. So let's bring that, those funds in, and put them where they need to go, which by law includes affordable housing, and make sure that we can have a great community where everyone can live forever.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. President. We've talked about this, we got an update in, I think during budget season, that, so to Counselor Burnley's point about who's trying to get around this. We used to use some software to try to catch people. We got the update during budget season that we were discontinuing use of that software. I've talked to Director Bean about some alternative software options out there that I've seen demoed, that go beyond just simply catching people, but actually have some really interesting tools around, they track the price that's being charged, because actually, we have to kind of go sometimes ask for more, more money from DOR than, than what they're offering us. And it helps us prove our case that actually, you know, we can show that it was rented on these nights at this amount using this software. And that allows us to basically go get our just due, basically, from DOR. So I think it's, this is a discussion that where we should be looking also at what software options out there would allow us to properly monitor this, and then to get what we are owed from DOR as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ba would like to sign on as well. There are a few places I think this could go. My instinct is that it could go to finance, although the way, the way it's drafted, it strikes me as a Housing and Community Development question, which is why I wanted to see the Chair's thought on that in terms of getting it on an agenda. But if it has been discussed in finance, and there's, and it'll, has a better chance of getting on an agenda quickly there, I'm happy to defer to the will of the council. It could be taken up at either of those committees. Legislative matters would be the other one, but I think, you know, at this point, we're not, we're not at the point of changing the audits. We're looking at where we are with things, so. Okay, that going to Housing and Community Development? All right, I think that's a good place to start the conversation. So that will be laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to Housing and Community Development. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item 4.8 is an order by Counselor Klingon, that the Director of Parking place no parking here to corner signs on Walnut Street at Sunnyside Avenue.
Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. This is just one of, hopefully, a few different interventions for this particular area. I had to do a site visit with some residents over there. If you, if you've ever been coming down Walnut, and you come to the street known as Sunnyside, there's like this big sort of property wall where these old markers were of like the olden times, you know, like these big pillars, basically, and these big bushes. And there's only one, a sidewalk on one side of Sunnyside, and essentially, people park right up to the edge of the intersection of Sunnyside and Walnut. And if someone's coming off of Sunnyside, they can't get out of Sunnyside onto Walnut, so. But there's other issues as well, just in terms of speeding, and it's just a disaster waiting to happen. We also have kids that walk that way daily, you know, me and Counselor McGlaughlin have put in requests for a mid-block crosswalk there. So I'd like this to go to Traffic and Parking, please.
All right, seen no further discussion? That, oh, sorry, Counselor Burnley, is your hand up on that one? Give it a moment, could be from before, but, okay. So that will be laid on the table for approval with a copy to Traffic and Parking.
Item 4.9 is an order by Counselor Klingon, that the Director of Mobility add Moreland Street to the queue for speed humps.
Counselor Klingon?
Just place on file, please.
That item will be placed on file. Laid on the table for approval.
Item 5.1 is a communication by Counselor Mbah, conveying a report of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counselor Ba?
Wow, we're going fast today, Mr. President. So at this October 11, you know, Affordable Housing Trust meeting, the Somerville Affordable Housing Trust Fund review finances showing 2.6 million in CPA funds, and 11.9 million in non-CPA funds available, and authorized 400,000 in fiscal year 2026 for housing assistance, RFPs to be advertised in mid-September. I'm sure this probably already happened. Updates included the mayor's selection of Nick Pittman for the banking and finance trustee seat, that was the vacancy, a mortgage amendment request for 24 Webster Street, and a time extension for the 15th Temple Street project, which will add 115 affordable units. The trust also approved two contracts under the municipal voucher program for about $1 million with the Cambridge Housing Authority for Administration and Renter subsidies, and also about 100,000 with CAS for housing search and stabilization services, ensuring uninterrupted support for housing needs, households that are in need, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. That item will be placed on file. Laid on the table to be placed on file.
Item 5.2 is a communication by Counselor Mbah, that conveying a report of the Job Creation and Retention Trust.
Counselor Ba?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, the Job Creation and Retention Trust, you know, met on September 16. And it, with the trust actually also reported an uncommitted balance of about 2.3 million, with 400,000 received from 495 Columbia and 20,000 in interest, and 500,000 pending from the 74 Middlesex. But no new funds expected in 2026 and 2027. So the trust did review program updates, including the skill wrap-up and English language learning project, which, you know, underperformed and left about 95,000 unspent, sparking discussion about returning funds to the pot. They also had updates on the municipal job RFP under review, and the fall 2025 RFP with proposals due in October. So planning began for the November 20 annual meeting to highlight program impact, preview investment, and engage employers and the community in sustaining the trust work through partnership and state funding opportunities. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Ba. That item will be laid on the table to be placed on file.
And the next item is item 6B, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on October 7th, 2025.
Counselor Wilson?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on Tuesday, October 7th, with all five members present. We took up a 16-item agenda over the course of a 57-minute meeting. In addition to the minutes from our September 23rd meeting, we unanimously recommended that you approve tonight an extension of our online bill payment contract with City Hall Systems. And there was a clarification on this that was asked for, on Tuesday night, that was sent out today. Hopefully, folks had a chance to read that, that answered an outstanding question from the other night. Additionally, we recommend, we recommend that you approve tonight an increase of the stipend for the municipal hearing officer... an increase of the stipend for the municipal hearing officer. We learned that was to ensure coverage through the end of the calendar year, while a replacement is hired. Also, four prior invoice items, an appropriation of nearly a million dollars, a quarter million dollars, sorry, from the 10 cents per rideshare trip in Somerville in FY '24 that's going to be used to increase funding for our FY '26 Vision Zero work. Also, $100,000 from Encore and a little over $50,000 from the Mass Cultural Council. Those are both going to local cultural council grants through the Arts Council. And finally, three state grants totaling nearly half a million dollars for E911 personnel training and medical dispatch. Finally, we had a discussion on Council Mbah's order asking for reporting on our many stabilization funds, a number of which are dormant. We also discussed Bill Valetta's comprehensive public communication about this. Director Bean made sure that we knew that he's available for councilors to have offline conversations ahead of what we hear will be an upcoming update to this council on some strategy in this area. So with that, I ask that you approve this committee report as submitted.
Any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote on the report.
On the Finance Committee report of October 7, 2025, Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo. Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mbah.
Aye.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and one absent, that committee report is approved. And that does put one item before this council for a roll call vote, which is Item 25-1459. Let me tell you what that is. It's a request to appropriate $100,000 from the Encore Artist and Cultural Support Stabilization Fund to support local cultural council grants to artists, organizations, and schools.
Roll call.
On that item, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mbah.
Aye.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor, that item is approved. Okay, and the next item then is Item 6C, a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting on October 2, 2025.
Council McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet at that time. For about 15 minutes, we talked a little bit about Gilman Square and not much else. I submit the committee report to be accepted.
Any discussion on the committee report? I see none. That will be laid on the table for approval.
And then we have, and then we have Item 6D, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on September 30, 2025.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met for a brisk hour and a quarter on September 30 and had three big items in front of us. One of them, we kept in committee, that is the approval of a home rule petition to raise some spending thresholds, bidding thresholds, for contracts to go to entities, basically a way to raise the thresholds under which things have to go to a certain bidding process, allowing us to grant more contracts to disadvantaged businesses. So this is very similar to the city of Boston and Cambridge's work. We kept it in committee because there were a few language questions, which we received some email from on Monday, so I'd asked my colleagues, who got a copy of that, please let me know by tonight, because I have to get the agenda in for Tuesday, if you're ready to proceed on that one. Outside of that, we did approve, move two things for approval after some minor edits, one of which is a home rule petition allowing us to raise the maximum amount of fines for violations. I know folks in the community and the city council as well are excited about this. Previously, our maximum that we could assign to any ticket for any municipal violation was $300, and now we'll be going up. So that is up for a vote tonight. And then also, for a vote tonight will be ordainment of an amendment to, let's see, Section 7 and Section 111B to require notification to tenants of parking limitations. So we have this new, relatively new, in the last several years, regime that folks who are coming into new-build apartments in MR zones, near transit, are ineligible for a parking permit. And it's just, the parking department knows this. Presumably, the people buying, building and selling these units know this. We just want to make sure that everybody who is potentially going to be living in those units is aware of it when they're going to apply for those apartments or to purchase that residence. So this just adds a notification requirement for any units that are in those areas. So with that, those two things, I think, are going to be up for us for separate votes, and I ask that the committee report be accepted as submitted.
Any discussion, questions? All right, see none. Let's do a roll call vote on the committee report.
On the report of the Legislative Matters Committee meeting of September 30, 2025, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor, that committee report is approved. And as the chair noted, there are now several items before this committee for a roll call vote, starting with Item 25-1429, a home rule petition to raise the maximum amount of fines for violations allowed by Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 21D.
Call a roll.
On the item, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor, that item is approved. And then we have, half a second here, Item 25-1460, ordainment of an amendment to Section 7 and Section 1-11B of the Code of Ordinances to require notification to tenants of parking permit restrictions in transit areas. On enrollment, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor, that item is ordained. The next item then is Item 6E, a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, meeting on October 8, 2025.
Council Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, we met on the day as listed and discussed four different items, including a new garage, some flammable for a emergency generator, a new dog kennel, and I think maybe my favorite of that night, a new Indian restaurant near Powder House, which will be, which the committee recommended be approved with hours up until 4:00 a.m. That is, in a particular area, I wanted to just say that is not near many of Butters. There's a building coming online next to it, but it does not have tenants yet. And we discussed noise complaints pretty extensively with them to help soften the road. But it was a great discussion. We got new businesses come into the community with knowledge of our expectations, and I would humbly submit the report as written to be approved.
Any discussion? Do a roll call, it's laid on the table. All right, so that will be laid on the table for approval.
Item 6F is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on September 29, 2025.
Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Traffic and Parking Committee met with all three members present. All items were marked as completed, and two were kept in committee. Regarding installing crosswalks across Walnut Street and Wigglesworth Street, Director Postoway said that the challenge is weighing the priority for doing these locations versus all other requests around the city. We received an update on the community path safety improvements. Director Rosson stated that a community engagement process has been launched to discuss safety and upgrades to the community paths. Mobility and engineering staff are reviewing data, and signage will be developed and installed perhaps in the spring. Regarding installing the left-turn signal for vehicles turning from Somerville Ave onto Bow Street, Director Rosson stated that a left-turn traffic signal is not appropriate at this location. He was explained that a more appropriate option would be a left turn after a stop sign. In regards to the efforts to fix the unsafe crossing of the community path at School Street, Director Postoway reported that the city hired a consultant to produce a design and that it should be ready in October for presentation. We discussed the Wigglesworth Municipal Parking Lot Sign. Director Remfret requested that a specific language be sent to her so a new sign can be made. We discussed the removal of the "Do Not Block" intersection signage at the intersection of Broadway and Henkley Street. Director Postoway, both directors, said that this area is due for street reconstruction where this will be addressed. Pinckney Street has been added to the speed hump list, and that a neighborway in the area is something Director Rosson will follow up with, with the Ward One Councilor. Director Rosson gave us the background of what happened with the 90 bus route. Regarding the request to install stop signs on 10 Hills Road at Governor Winthrop Road, Director Rosson explained that federal guidelines dictate a certain due diligence steps are taken, and if the city cannot meet the requirements, staff will try to find other ways to alleviate the problem. Regarding the request to update the traffic signal equipment at the intersection of Rogers Avenue and Boston Ave, Director Postoway stated that it's best to incorporate this request into a larger project possibly in the next few years to make it more doable. Regarding the request to install a rapid flashing beacon with push-button stop sign in front of the East Somerville Community School, Director Rosson stated that this type of sign is typically used on a longer crossing, not on narrow streets. However, if this concern continues, staff will look at available options. I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, that will be laid on the table for approval.
The next item is Item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to several tables of the zoning ordinance to permit home-based child daycare accessory uses and make corrections.
That'll be referred to Land Use with a copy to the Plenary Board.
Item 7.2 is a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to several sections of the zoning ordinance to make pre-submittal meetings optional for most permits and to improve clarity and consistency.
All right, that'll be referred to Land Use with a copy to the Plenary Board.
Mr. President, could I move to waive the readings of Items 7.4 to 7.12? And ask those be sent to Finance?
7.4 through 7.12, waive the readings and send to Finance.
Item 7.13 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Dante Carrero to the position of police officer.
Council Ewan Campan.
Furthest to confirmations committee, please. I'm sorry, this is Officer. I move to recommend approval.
For first appointment, we recommend approval on 7.13. Any discussion? Council McGlaughlin. Council McGlaughlin, would you like a reminder on our default plan for new appointments?
I'll leave it alone.
No, it's all right. So for folks who may be watching at home, the council recently has taken the general practice of, with new appointments, of asking those to be approved that night unless there's an objection, of course, because something can always be sent to committee. So this would be consistent with the recent practice for new officer appointments. Get that right, Mr. Chair? Very well. All right, any further discussion? Call the roll on that one?
We don't need to.
Don't need to. Really? That's the one we don't need to call a roll?
Go figure.
Okay. That item is approved. No, it's laid on the table for approval.
Laid on the table for approval.
All right, I was just going to do it. Okay, fine.
I mean, if you want-
No, we'll lay it on the table for approval. If there's no discussion, then we're good to go.
Item 7.14 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Nicholas Chicharoni to the position of police officer.
Move to recommend approval.
All right, see no discussion. That'll be laid on the table for approval.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry conveying the Somerville Pollinator Action Plan and related updates.
All right, see no discussion. The request is to send a copy of this to Open Space, Environment, and Energy. I guess we just accept it. We don't have to approve it, right?
Laid on the table and placed on file with a copy.
Placed on file first, okay. That'll be laid on the table to be placed on file with a copy to be sent to Open Space, Environment, and Energy.
Got it. Item 8.2 is an officer's communication from the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry conveying the Somerville Open Space and Recreation Plan, 2025 to 2035.
Council Wilson.
Mr. President, we can talk about this one. I'm guessing this one's getting sent to Open Space as well. Happy to talk about it more there. I just want to say, if you haven't looked at this, please go look at it. It's really good. Just want to commend staff for the work that went into this, to the public for giving input on this. This is government done right, right here. Really good report. Just encourage everyone to look at it.
All right, very well. So that will be laid on the table to be placed on file with a copy to Open Space, Environment, and Energy.
Item 8.3 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying block party licenses issued.
Block parties. I'm just going to do that every time, because I want people to look at this and see where their block parties are, and go out and join the block parties, because block parties are awesome. If your list, if your street isn't on there and you haven't had a block party, call the city clerk's office and find out how to do a block party. Because as I said before, block parties are awesome. That will be laid on the table to be placed on file. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item 8.4 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying the selection of Emily Lopez Tucci and Mahika Gogate to the position of City Council Project Assistant.
Any discussion? I will, dare I speak from the podium, let's just say, I'm just wicked excited to have these folks on board. It's, it'll be a really good step towards what down the road will be, I hope, even more comprehensive staffing of this body to enable us to help our constituents. And I want to thank the forebearers in this, one of whom is in the room here, our earlier hired staff, who proved that it can be a really, really valuable tool for us to have to better serve our constituents. So all but wish to say, I'm just really happy and excited to have these folks aboard. So that will be laid on the table to be placed on file.
That brings us to Item 9.1.
Council Burnley.
Yes, through you, I'd like to move for approval and waive the ratings of Items 9.1 through 9.4, as well as 10.3 and 10.4, with a particular shout-out to Honk. It's coming up. It's going to be October 10 through 12 at various times and locations. But I just want everyone to show up, listen to great music, enjoy the activism, and be a part of something that is, dare I say, uniquely Somerville, although, of course, other people copy us.
Yes, thank you. I was going to ask Council Burnley, so just to be clear, we want 10.1 and 10.2 to go to committee?
Thank you, sorry. No, I'd move for approval of those as well.
So we have the ratings of 9.1, 9.3, 9.4, 10.1 through 10.4.
haven't looked at this, please go look at it. It's really good. Just want to commend staff for the work that went into this, to the public for giving input on this. This is government done right, right here. Really good report. Just encourage everyone to look at it.
All right, very well. So that will be laid on the table to be placed on file with a copy to Open Space, Environment, and Energy.
Item 8.3 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying block party licenses issued.
Block parties. I'm just going to do that every time, because I want people to look at this and see where their block parties are, and go out and join the block parties, because block parties are awesome. If your list, if your street isn't on there and you haven't had a block party, call the city clerk's office and find out how to do a block party. Because as I said before, block parties are awesome. That will be laid on the table to be placed on file. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item 8.4 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying the selection of Emily Lopez Tucci and Mahika Gogate to the position of City Council Project Assistant.
Any discussion? I will, dare I speak from the podium, let's just say I'm just wicked excited to have these folks on board. It'll be a really good step towards what down the road will be, I hope, even more comprehensive staffing of this body to enable us to help our constituents. And I want to thank the forebearers in this, one of whom is in the room here, our earlier hired staff, who proved that it can be a really, really valuable tool for us to have to better serve our constituents. So all but wish to say, I'm just really happy and excited to have these folks aboard. So that will be laid on the table to be placed on file.
That brings us to item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes, through you, I'd like to move for approval and waive the ratings of items 9.1 through 9.4, as well as 10.3 and 10.4, with a particular shout-out to Honk. It's coming up. It's going to be October 10 through 12 at various times and locations. But I just want everyone to show up, listen to great music, enjoy the activism, and be a part of something that is, dare I say, uniquely Somerville, although, of course, other people copy us.
Yes, thank you. I was going to ask Counselor Burnley, so just to be clear, we want 10.1 and 10.2 to go to committee?
Thank you, sorry. No, I move for approval of those as well.
So we have the ratings of 9.1, 9.3, 9.4, 10.1 through 10.4. And I saw a hand, does somebody, Counselor Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to call out that Honk is already upon us right now in Union Square. The bands were firing up on my way up here, and while we are often imitated, yet never duplicated, the music is going to continue out in the public in Union Square until at least 10 o'clock, and is also going on inside the Jungle Music Club, right there off Sanborn Court. Every half hour, a new band. So if you just want to get an early jump on it, and perhaps to our helpful cruise director, I would suggest